Testing, testing.
Those that have joined us online, the meeting will be started in just a second.
Okay, all yours, Miss.
We'll go ahead and call our special meeting of the Wayne County Board of Education to order. It is 4:02, and we can stand. If I like it, I'll look ready. Can I turn around?
Let's do this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the record show that all members are present in person. And we can begin our meeting with our local school improvement council presentation from Fort Gay. So, Mark DeHuyt.
All right, welcome. And I know you guys are used to seeing me in a picture over the last several years. So it's been a great change to move up here, down here, I guess, really, to Fort Gay. Dr. Ross and I are leading this school. We've seen a lot of growth. We're going to keep today's LSC presentation pretty sweet until the point, you guys know how I like to make it roll. What you have in front of you is exactly what's on the board. So if you have questions, feel free to, you know, look at that. To start out, our enrollment, this presentation was set for last month. I forgot to update the enrollment today. According to the paper, we're at 450 students. We might be at 444 or 445. We, we are very transient, so we have lots of ups and downs with our enrollments. Definitely been a trend over the years. I was looking back at trend data and it's definitely dropped over the last several years, about 150 kids. So our goal is to hopefully, as we work together, Dr. Ross and I and the rest of the team, we keep moving that up as well. The next bit of data that you're going to see is historical data with our general summative assessment. What we did is we've code, we coded, the colors are going to be groups of students, so apples to apples, so that you can see how these kids are growing, how they're developing. Dr. Ross and I have definitely noticed there is a, there's kind of a shift when you get to the middle school level with proficiency. I think that's just natural for the development of the child, emotional intelligence. But what I want to really focus on today is if you look at the last section, it's going to be gray, and that's this year's data. So when we started out this fall, so your first column you're seeing is math, the second column you're seeing is English, and then the third column is going to be science. We obviously were, you know, in single digits in the math as far as proficiency. As a school, for the fall, we are at 2.8% proficiency, so very, very low number, but expected, especially in the fall. Then when you look at ELA data, it's a little bit better. Third grade, obviously, they struggle because they've never been exposed. We were at 14% proficient, then eight and a half percent proficient in science. What I want to celebrate, and I'm really kind of glad that our meeting did get moved, because originally, we were not going to have our winter benchmark data. Our school in the winter for math is up to 16% proficient. So we're talking a major improvement and increase. I did not analyze each individual because I wanted to get on here quickly. And then as far as our ELA data, it went up to 30% proficiency, so more than doubled. Science, same situation, went from eight and a half percent to 23%. Now, is that where we want to settle, settle? Absolutely not. But it is a place to go and it's a place to grow. One of the things Dr. Ross and I really work on is growth with our staff and our students so that they understand that we're trying to improve our school in the long term. Scrolling down, this is just a snapshot. I'm sure you've seen this data. This is literally live from probably 30 minutes ago. It's the same data, I just kind of put it into the user-friendly language from the front sheet, front sheet, y'all know what I mean. So we could see that as well. Questions about general summit of data or anything? Definitely some bright spots. We, we are aware of our weaker areas this year. With our Title I budget, we did something that probably hasn't been done in a long time. And we hired two more staff members specifically for intervention. So if you look at us from a K8 perspective, we have someone who works intervention, someone who works K1, somebody who works second grade, somebody who works third grade, somebody who works fourth grade, and somebody who works fifth grade, an extra interventionist in all of those classes, plus your special ed department. Our goal was to use some Title I funding and do some interventionists in the middle school. Timing didn't work out, but as we prep for next year with our strategic plan, that is exactly where we're going to go. So I just wanted you all to see our data. Next section, this is our instructional reading level with the Third Grade Success Act. I know you guys are, have heard that many times. That was really a focus to put down into our LSC document. It is broken down by grade level. We have a lot of work to do, we know that. It's not so much that the kids are not reading on grade level, a lot of them are not taking or haven't taken the assessment seriously. And that's one of the things we've worked on this year is just the rigor that our school can bring them. And so a lot of growth has been made from August till now, and I anticipate it continuing as we go. If you look down at the very bottom line, I kind of wrote it down for school, there's two categories there, your percentage of kids on level or above, you would say 28% of our school. I know, I feel very confident that we have a lot more students who are reading proficiently but are not performing on the assessment. Sometimes we over-assess, and so we have to kind of reframe our brains that way as well. With the Third Grade Success Act as well, what concerns me is this middle school piece, where we have so many students not on grade level in middle school. I did go through and look at the data, over 100% of our middle schoolers are at least on third grade. So that's encouraging because of the data with, you know, situations in prisons and things of that nature, but there's still a lot for us to do. Like I said, our interventionist, we have ECATs, obviously, in all of our classrooms up till second grade. Next year, as we add ECATs in third grade, that will help getting these proficiencies. The teachers have been a lot more intentional about instructional time. We've, Sean and I have worked a lot with planning when they're in their classrooms, the walkthroughs that we are seeing, whether formal or informal, we're seeing teachers teaching. So we're seeing a lot of positive things, but again, we were, they got a lot of work to do, and so the growth is moving. So we, you know, we celebrate that. I mentioned attendance earlier. In this 2020-21 school year, our school had over 562 students, and we are down to 445, 450. So our community, a lot of times, they will go across the river, we're very, very close to Louise, and everybody knows that. One of the things that we're working is with us as a collective group, is the community sees us as a partnership, not these two isolated pieces, because I think everybody wants to see the Fort Gay community improve, and that's one of the things that we want to work towards and get our attendance up. So specifically about attendance, this is something that I really want to celebrate with you guys. Before you flip the page, in November, myself, Mrs. Patrick is sitting over here, and another teacher, we went to Morgantown to an attendance conference. In Wayne County, in all of Wayne County schools, Fort Gay is second place, and it's not a good second place, of chronic absenteeism. Over 40% of our students were considered chronically absent, and that's just not being in the building. That doesn't have anything to do with excused or unexcused, it's just being here. So as a team, we, we worked together, came up with this program. I should have brought one of the posters down, I wasn't even thinking. Every day, our students, the classrooms are in a challenge. If they get 95% attendance or above, they earn a piece to their potato, they're called present potatoes. Well, I had some 3D printed Viking helmets made, and so the very last thing they put on their potato was a Viking helmet. We had one of our students in eighth grade draw us a picture of the potato, and so there'll be a giant game of capture the flag every day. When your potato gets full, you go sneak somewhere in one of the hallways and steal a flag. There's only three. And so our kids, our attendance has, like, drastically changed. We have been at, we check it literally every single day. Mrs. Patrick, another teacher, they're posting on social media all the time about kids coming to school, what our rates are. Today, we hit 90% attendance, I believe. That's huge, huge for us. We have our classrooms, we've challenged them to 95% attendance with the staff member involved in that number as well. So if the kids are present, normally, it's only one or two people can be absent. So if I'm absent, but all my students are there, they still get to add their piece. So there's this incentive, and every day, we're celebrating. Shout out to these homerooms, you got to add a piece to your potato today. It has been the most fun. So we should have somebody capturing the flag tomorrow, maybe Monday. So that's, it should be fun. And I, we, the rule is, is if you're in middle school, you have to go to either the intermediate hallway or the primary hallway. So you're going to have big kids sneaking down to the preschool rooms, taking their posters, and vice versa, and it, it should be chaotically fun. I don't know, that's good grammar, but that's what we use today. But what I want to celebrate, all of that work, you know how much school we have missed. This was as of January 21st. In November, our school was at 40% chronically absent. On the day that we pulled us, we're already down to 30% chronically absent. So it's working. You can tell by the buzz of the cafeteria, you can tell by the buzz of the hallways. Kids are loud, kids are kids, they should be loud, within reason. And so I just really wanted you guys to see that work that's being done there. We can just get them in the building, academics begin to grow. Somebody mentioned tardies one day, I was like, we're not worried about tardies just yet, don't tell the superintendent. We just want them to get in the building, because that's, we have students who have not, and parents who maybe get upset or don't like that, they're like, well, we'll just go across the river, or we'll just homeschool. And we want to build this community of, if you just let us have them, your day is easy, we promise. So that's one of the things we're working towards. If you look at the very last page, discipline, if you know the history of me professionally, discipline, rarely did we have out-of-school suspensions. Adding middle school to my day increases that. Now, with that being said, we've had 18 out-of-school suspensions this year, four level three incidents, fighting disruptive behavior, 11 level twos, fighting individual violation of school rules, two level ones, and then we had a, it was, it was reported on there as a level zero, there were one of those. I can say, Dr. Ross, with confidence, not sure the last time we've even had a leave us write-up, that's where required suspension.
In a few months.
I think so too. We hit it pretty heavy at the beginning, just because the kids needed some rules and some structure. They have just risen to a great group of students. We have kids who volunteer, they help with our backpack program. We pretty much can let them come in here fourth period and build it, deliver it, and for the most part, clean up after themselves. Can do it all in one day. So we're really starting to see some student leaderships. We have educator handbook at our school, which is a wonderful tool, all of our schools should have it. We have had 330 detentions, 36 lunch ISS, and 343 occurrences that have required documentation, parent conversations. We've spent a lot of time reaching back out to parents, hey, this is going on here at school, and that's been very encouraging as well. We did want to take some time and celebrate positive. All of our middle schools in Wayne County, I'm sure you all have heard, received funds from the Lewis Foundation. Our school has broken that into two categories. Mr. Lewis wanted grades, behavior, and attendance, and the team over, was it last year, I believe, made the decision to kind of break those up into two. And so for students, for grades and behavior, that's when we actually go out on field trips. We have one coming up this Tuesday. First six weeks, 77 students got to attend, that was 52%. Second six weeks, 70 students, and third six weeks, 64. I do think as things progress, we start to have higher expectations, grades, you know, everyone making straight A's does not benefit anyone. So that's something we're working on as well. Because I believe the GPA is 3.0, do you remember what Katie pulls that at?
I want to say 3.5.
Yep, is it 3.5? It's pretty high. Good, right? We got to have expectations, like, there has to be something there for them. But then we also wanted to celebrate the attendance, and this is where the big celebration came. I don't know if you guys know anything about middle schoolers, but it is hard for them to get up in the mornings and come to school. We have had perfect attendance in some of our middle school classrooms, like, every day. It's been really exciting to, to celebrate them. So first six weeks, only 35% of those students got to participate for attendance. This past six weeks, 59%. So getting these middle schoolers in the building. With Lewis Foundation money, some gaming systems, along with faculty senate were purchased, and over in this room over here, on the other side of these windows, we have the Viking VIP room, and students earn 30 minutes' time to go in there and play video games. And to celebrate, we have another, we just pulled the data for kids who have kept 95% attendance the whole month of January, that's 244 students. So we're going to build a system where they get some time in the Viking VIP room to celebrate as well. Um... So we're going to build a system where they get some time in the Viking VIP room to celebrate as well. Our elementary students don't have the benefit of the Lewis Foundation, but those classroom teachers, you know, they have their treasure boxes, they have their dojos. Yes, sir.
Tim Johnson, one of the parents, just newly in the area. But I just heard you say about the last six weeks, but isn't that a skewed number about the attendance? Because of the January school closures, wouldn't that be not a, really a fair assessment based on the first two weeks' analysis?
Yes and no. So with the bus situation, Mr. Oxender, you might have to correct me if I'm wrong. With buses, I'm not sure if that loads into Weavis the same way or not. So like you guys, you're on Parsons Branch, you all, your bus situation has been a nightmare this year.
Okay, never runs.
So.
That's part of the problem.
Yeah, so that data here, we tried to pull out all of those excuses that had anything to do with bus.
But right, but that, that misinterprets the percentage equation, doesn't it?
No, because it's how many days. So for example, if there's 30 days in the six weeks, and we were closed six of them, we only went on to 24 days of possible attendance.
Well, we were closed for more than, or at least my end was closed for more than six days.
Well, what I'm saying is that whenever we were present, if this building was open, those were the only numbers we used to go into this data. But you're right, this is very hard because we know that, but even at that, it's up to 59%. So even with the amount of, we still had an increase in attendance.
100%, what do you say?
So if we're open, that's the only days we looked at were the open days. Anything else on discipline? And then last thing is, we have our strategic plan. We always have it available with Title 1, that's something we have to put out there. I did not make a copy for everyone, I'm sure that you've seen these. We have three areas of focus at our school, chronically absent, right? Instructional focus, to increase proficiency in math, and then to increase proficiency in ELA. And then we talked about, the other one is positive behavior, which is everything that's supportive within our LSIC. I did make a copy of it, we also keep it at the front office, if anybody ever needs to see. Questions, comments, concerns about anything on our presentation? Have grace with us, we're moving in the right direction. Fort Gaye, we will be number one in the county, I hope everybody hears that, for at least getting them to school. We can work through those other things. So we just, that's incredibly, we know. We know, and that's been the biggest hurdle is that, you know, and even in the past, with staff attendance has been a problem. And we just, there's just been a morale and encouragement in the building. People want to be in the building. So we're, we're making steps and directions in that way, so.
I'm glad, I'm glad to see the focus on the attendance, because I know that that's, that's been an ongoing issue. And to see those numbers improving, and I think to, to the gentleman's point, the numbers in the district are going to be inflated for the month of January. The NTID days, those don't count against the students, so those will raise numbers. But if we, you know, if you continue to see an improvement over the course of the year, it's going to be a real positive step, so glad to see the focus there.
And if you look at our special education numbers, we have over 150 IMPs in our school. Now, some of those are speech only, but in academic IMPs, we're at 75 or 78. Mrs. Patrick works, you know, really closely with the staff process. And when you, like today, we looked at two students and their data. One of them doesn't come to school. And it's really hard to say, are they getting the instruction needed if they're not in the building? And so that's kind of one of those conversations that we have to keep having. And parents are like, well, I have an excuse, and we agree with that. And I understand, but there also is that if you're not in the building, we can't teach you. And that's what our, that's what we want to do with your students, so. But yeah, attendance is definitely our biggest focus right now. And then like rigor and engagement are the, are the next two, and that comes from our teachers, so.
We've, I know the legislature has started discussion again, and I heard the governor talking about it in the state of the state yesterday evening, about behavior, especially at the elementary level. And those behaviors in, in pre-K, kindergarten, are, are you seeing? And again, we're in a public meeting, so we can't talk about specific situations. But are you, what level of problem is it here?
So at the very beginning, we were having a lot of it. And most of it was being stemmed from some outside parameters that we could not really control. So one of the things we did is we were just very diligent working with the parents in supporting mental health, health, supporting positive parenting in the home. You know, here are some strategies to.
And are we talking about those youngest grade levels?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're talking little, primary, primary. That has been a huge help for us. Then the support of the special ed department has helped too, knock on wood. We, the students are, are definitely improving, but it's taking a lot of hands on deck to help support those, because most of them are coming because of mental health or trauma situations. I will say, the ECATs being in our classrooms, primary classrooms, the intervention supports that we have. You know, last year we, or last semester, our interventionist took a few students to support some behaviors that were kind of, not really out of our jurisdiction, but not necessarily we've done in the past, but was creative thinking. And it really helped some of those students help with classrooms, but we're seeing them.
If I can, John, I, I think that, you talk about the behavior of the younger level. Our, I've touted every year, but PBIS kind of helps with that, because the way we approach discipline, a lot of ways, just reteaching the behavior. And that goes from PK even through the eighth grade, because a lot of these kids, sometimes if they don't know it's not socially appropriate, they don't know. We need to tell them that first. So sometimes we get teachers who come in here from other schools, like, why aren't you dropping the hammers? It's like, well, they need to be taught before they can face that consequence. So I think having that in place and having it in place for years has really helped, because our youngsters, they've had older siblings that's been through, they, they kind of learn from their older siblings. And I think that alleviates a little bit of the issues. We're not seeing as much as maybe other schools are, if that makes sense at all.
And if the issue is happening, I've noticed adults are taking time to sit with them in the hallway and like get to the root of why it's happening. But then that positive behavior within the classroom support has really, they're there, they are there. But I think we're not seeing them take over like maybe in other areas are because of the way that our positive behavior system is in place, and the staffing supports that.
You have a social worker here as well?
We do. So also, I was going to tell you too, as far as our mental health team, so we have social worker two days a week, we have a mental health counselor three days a week. They're opposite schedules. We have our school-based counselor five days a week. We also have a partnership with OVP, and they have a counselor that comes in. With OVP, it's a little different, because parents have to fill out the enrollment form for that and do an intake. But we can kind of help bridge that partnership. And so her caseload has gotten so large, which is a blessing, that she's even added Monday mornings. So she's here two and a half days a week. We definitely have several pieces in place. We really could benefit a mental health counselor five days a week. That might even be something we look at when we look at next year's strategic plan. And, and our Title 1 budget, is that something that we feel that we need to invest in? I know at one point there was, were Title 1 funds used.
It can be, but we have never.
We have not here, okay. It may just be something that we want to, yes, sir.
I'll just comment onto it, I heard you say about your parent involvement and that you talk to them, and I would like to have you address that a little bit more, because I believe myself, I'm a traditionalist and raised my students, you know them, we just met, and they behaved quite well. And so, thank God for that, but just where is that level of involvement of the parents? Because it does start at the home, that's where we all can be honest, it starts at the home. And how do we engage that, and can we offer another program that is an after-school? And that they can be involved socially around other children with supervision to help collaborate that together jointly, because that's how they're going to learn. They're going to learn a lot better when they're around other students acting appropriately versus supervision, if you will, with more adults or counseling. And that, I think, is a step with counseling, and I'd like you to answer to something of that.
Well, we, we do have an after-school program. It's open till 5:00 every day. We also, when, I was referring specifically to the parents, those are behaviors that, outside of our parameters, right? We, we facilitate, Dr. Ross and I will be in lunch duty, and we're helping mediate and monitor and teach these kids. I had a couple kids in the office, or in the library one day, and we, conflict resolution, right? So we're modeling those things, we're teaching those, we're sending, giving those opportunities. It's when the behaviors amp up to the point that we've exhausted every resource that we have, that's when we might go to the, the parent specifically and say, okay, these are some things, if you tried these at home, it maybe would help us here at school. And we're talking the primary, little class.
No, I understand that, but I think maybe, maybe I can detail it this way, or specifically state is that encouraging the parent to involve them, enroll them in the after-school program, that they can socially be around other kids, that they can feel accepted in a different way, and emotionally play off other children that might be behaving properly, instead of just everything you do by dictating it with an adult will end up turning into seeming like punishment to them, instead of being receptive to everything in your environment around them. That's all I'm trying to portray. And I'm just speaking on what more involvement. I think the first suggestion is, isn't trying to totally fix the leak on the roof right away, because a lot of people just don't want to hear it. I think it, it's really offering that option for them right away. Let's try something very simplistic first, because most common sense things can cure both problems.
Sure, sure, sure. And that's definitely something we, I would love for us to, we can brainstorm, we can chat regularly and come up with some ideas if you would like to for our school.
The more you involve parents, though, the more you're going to have to do screening, because we've had some problems where parents got involved in the wrong way.
Sure, sure, yeah, yeah.
Do we have a 20% year here?
We do.
Okay, so we do have some after-school programs that are.
Yeah.
And we, we have Energy Express, we're an Energy Express site. I'm not sure what the status is on summer camp just yet from the county level, but we also hosted that last year, so. Energy Express is a great program. I actually worked in that when I was in college, so.
Now, so can I just respond to Dennis's edit? So what I'm trying to state is, is not the involvement directly that the parent comes as with your program to be an adult supervisor or something like that to come and offer that. I'm specifically offering the thing that, that the child would be able to say, hey, we have a two-hour program after school, or an hour program, and we do this and this, and other kids volunteer for this program. And that's how I'm saying involving them, offering them solutions, directly circumventing maybe what's causing the problem. It might be that behavior.
I think I understand what more of what you're saying now. We do have some after-school clubs, we have Good News Club, which is, there's no requisites for that. ECATs join, that's two hours after school on Mondays, correct? We are, we would like to bring some of the things we've lost back, like Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. Haven't had that in a few years. We have a club period, and each teacher has a various club they can sponsor. Now granted, with, with Good News Club in these, in school clubs, there's no parental involvement, but if that's what you're kind of getting at, there are some kind of things where kids can kind of take ownership of.
There is, you're on that right track, but I don't want to take too much time, but I'll leave with this point on that, and we can talk further about it. But simply programs that are offered that you can get grants for and stuff that are extracurricular activity, such as robotics, for instance, for children. And I know, I know, this is just example I'm throwing out. That's what I'm specifically meaning and leaving is those. Instead of making it totally academic, or just let's go and play video games or something like that, actually the engagement, building, learning and all that. Every program and introduction of those type of things creates an absolute better environment.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Let's schedule a meeting for all of us, we'll chat about this in the good news.
Can I only leave with one last thing? And I think you guys have, this is my first meeting, I apologize again. Tim Johnson, Parsons Branch, had just moved here. But I have a few things that I would like to go over, if you don't have time. If I do have time, can I get scheduled on the next meeting?
Well, here's, my only thing is, I'm a parent and I have to go down the road to a basketball game. So I'm going to have to kind of be finished on my end of this. It's still, you know, board meeting, they have to go down the road. We absolutely want you to do those things.
I have a, yeah, I have one thing that I want to leave with this for. And then what is the Pritchard meeting? Is that for?
Exactly the same thing.
For Pritchard element.
Are you guys going there?
Yes.
Okay, so, but it's for that, not this.
Right, it's for Pritchard.
Okay.
So there are open, so like every 18 schools, each LSIC has to present to the board. That's what today is, it happens to be here. But they're always at the Wayne County Board of Education, the first two, first and third, Tuesday. Second, fourth, first and third.
Thank you, there Kelly, ah, sorry.
So second, fourth, right. Do you all have another meeting tonight at 6:00?
We have, yeah, we have a regular meeting tonight at 6:00 at Pritchard.
It's at Pritchard?
Yeah.
Weather's played havoc on our schedule.
Yeah. So that one could have like open forums and things like that?
Well, there should be public comment on any open public, all these are public meetings.
There's no, there's no delegations for special meetings, or delegations are for the regular meeting. So we do have that at 6:00 at Pritchard. But if you're wanting to meet specifically with the Fort Gaye administration about ideas.
Well, it's really for the district, and mainly, and you, this is in your talking points here, and it's about other information tools and other stuff to get linked out, and communicate tools where the teachers can respond to parents directly. And this district, to my knowledge, and my information, does not have what's called like, there's options like Parent Square.
We have Remind.
That's just barely, but Remind is owned by Parent Square now. And Remind, and I have that in this brochure for you, Remind does maybe half the things.
Okay, yeah, we'll definitely, that one, we might want to, if you want to go to the 6:00 meeting, you're welcome to, you can come and talk to Dr. Ross and I, we can kind of present it.
It's for the whole district?
That's right.
Okay, so I could come to that meeting tonight and present that to you guys, so that you can review this and try to get on board with a better system that works for the community?
Sure.
Thank you. And that's it, Pritchard, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
We just signed a delegation sheet, right?
Yep. Anything else?
I'm good.
Any other questions?
That was fantastic, we appreciate all your hard work.
Kelly, let me ask you one question, it's probably unfair just to sit here looking at the attendance stat. Of course, that's an issue throughout the county. And I want to be prepared for this, but if you have any ideas, is anything else we could do? I mean, I know Louise has got their whatever and all that, but to compete with sports.
I will say this, for the first time in our careers, there's options that are beyond us. So we have to have customer service, and we have to build an environment that people want to come to. And that's something that, you know, Dr. Ross and I are definitely envisioning for our community. I don't, I wish that I could say, here's the magic formula, I don't. Relationships and partnerships is probably the most powerful piece. But it's, 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 the struggle is real. I will definitely be thinking about some ideas and ways to help encourage it. Because, you know, when you look at enrollment dropings, you know, that's something that Mr. Oxender shares with us all the time. And people have choice and rights that they didn't have in the past. And so I think that's something we just can't, it's very hard to battle it.
Just a couple of weeks ago, we met with all the county legislators about what the school aid formula is doing to us.
Most kids that leave this school leave to go to Louise's to play sports. Because they have more opportunities over there, and that's why all of us are here, is because of our GM.
You guys, 6:00, Pritchard.
Well, I'm just telling you, like.
6:00, Pritchard, I got to go. I love you guys.
Mr. Ross was on Green Kids Go Across the River, because of the opportunities they had.
Okay, we, we'll recess here, and then we'll pick back up at Pritchard. And we can talk to some of you since we recess here.
Is there any facility needs before we return? Are you good as far as facility wise? Is there any major things that you can think of? I know it's fairly new considering all the other schools, but.
Playground, but that's something our, our PTO has been trying to come up with some different ideas that way.
That should be the spring.
Yeah, good. I can't think of anything, I mean, we're really in good.
I'll offer to you the same thing I offered to the other principals when we met like these. Playground issues, and Sean's aware of it. I have been, we're been in the legislature, there's LEDA grants that are available that I'm more than happy to work with your parent group and trying to get them, you know, in addition to what the board can do.
Awesome.
You know how to get home in there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we will recess here. 4:38, I'm just in motion.
Motion. That's a signal.
Motion, all right, any second, bye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five here, it's 4:38.
Okay. Okay. All right, have a good evening. Good.